Okay, welcome to today's special meeting, Thursday, February 13th, 2023, 5:30 PM. Roll call please.
Mayor Alma Baltrano.
President.
Mayor Potemps Rodriguez.
Present.
Member Juanita Molina.
Present.
Councilmember Diego Garza.
Present.
Councilmember Kathy Solorio.
Present.
Please rise for the fact that...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so we're going into closed session. Neil? Neil, can you present the item for closed session?
We have one item of potential litigation.
Okay, and seeing that there's no members of the public here, we can close the doors and go into closed session. Thank you.
Okay, and we are back from closed session, and there's nothing to report from closed session. We now will continue with the special meeting on the regular business. What is it? Item number two? Who's gonna present?
Um, I guess I will. Javier's not here. Um, this is another grant that we just got at the last minute.
Is it Michael?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, we need this resolution passed. It has to be submitted by the end of this month, so Javier asked to add it to the special meeting. Javier, and I mean, city engineer.
He's not here.
Can you see the other?
And this is to allow the city to apply for and receive funding from the US Department of Transportation, and will authorize the city manager or their designee to execute all grant agreements and any amendments on behalf of the city.
Any questions from the council? Any from the public? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Diego, second by Sabrina. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. Next item.
I guess I'll just... Um, this one is for a resolution that was presented to the council back in February of last year. Um, we have been awarded five million dollars. Two million for rehab, two million for down payment assistance, and one million for ADUs. Um, they're waiting for us to submit this resolution, so we need the council to approve that.
I motion.
Do I have any questions?
I don't have a question.
Any from the public? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve?
I motion.
I second it.
Okay, Kathy and Janie, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. And...
Like, she knows.
Now, this meeting is adjourned. We can start the regular scheduled meeting at... What time is it? Oh, okay. Regular scheduled meeting is now open, and it's at six thirty-two. Roll call, please.
Mayor Beltran?
Present.
Mayor Protem Rodriguez?
Present.
Councilmember Molina?
Present.
Councilmember Garza?
Present.
Councilmember Solorio? Treasurer Michelle Lopez?
Please rise for the flags, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which is its home, one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and eternal.
Okay. Alrighty, so we have, um... Any presentations? No?
I know, I don't know. I have it, but...
They're not here? Okay, so, um, we don't have Stephanie here either?
What happened with Stephanie?
Oh, you know what? That was Daryl?
Probably. So then what we can do is move on to public comments. Any public comments at this time? Okay, hearing none. We can move on to the next item. We'll come back to that. And that is any consent items. Is there any consent item that you'd like to pull at this time?
Number two.
Okay. Number two. Any other item? Hearing none. Do I have a motion to approve item number one?
Motion.
Motion by Diego. Kathy, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, and, okay, now we can have discussion of the item number two.
On... Yeah. And then, uh... Uh, I'm just waiting for Bertha. So, item number two is the minutes, and then, um, it just has... It's shown, we did changes to the security and stuff, but on the minutes, it's not shown. It's saying that it's still the old one. 'Cause we did it from six, from six and four, and, and then with alcohol and...
It's four to two, but it's not shown that on the... Going to be provided to her, that information? 'Cause there was supposed to be something provided in writing where on the application or how... So that's probably why it's not on there.
'Cause it doesn't reflect.
So...
Yeah.
Need to come back.
If you... Yeah, so it was, it was, uh, one security guard, no... Yeah, we could bring it back.
Yeah, because that, you're, we're not gonna be able to do it right now.
Senior center. Two security guards with alcohol for the... Correct.
So let's, let's just bring it back. Yeah, okay, so that will be back in the next meeting on March first? Second? Seventh? Oh, okay, seventh. So, we can bring that till then. I have a motion to bring back on March. Where on the minutes? Consent calendar. Yeah, on the regular meeting. We're already done with the special meeting. Yes.
A motion to move, um, number two to March seventh meeting.
I second.
Second by Diego. All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Okay, now, regular business?
You wanna go?
Not...
Oh, okay. Regular business, number three?
Resolution number twenty-two and four zero five, authorizing a grant application, acceptance and execution for the City of Farnier Emergency Well Rehabilitation Project.
Let's make...
Oh. There you go.
So we actually applied for last year, um, towards the end of last year, for, um, seven hundred thousand dollars to update well, well six. And, um, uh, we, we were lucky, we got awarded, we're one of, I think, three or four people that got in the state, so this is something that we require for us to, to, first process of accepting those funds. So this is in addition to our TCP projects, zero match, and, um, we, we're either gonna build out a new tank over here on the, um, a well, a well six, or rehabilitate it. So as we, as we start designing, we'll, we'll figure out exactly improvements of what we'll do with it, but...
And who's gonna be, we're gonna go out to bid for contracting that project out?
Yeah, for construction, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, any other, any questions? Any from the public? Nope, no questions? Okay, now, I'm hearing none. Resolution... May I have a motion to adopt resolution number twenty-two four dash zero five?
Motion.
Diego? And Janie? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Okay, now... Janie first, Diego, and then Janie, and five yes. Item number four. Yes.
That's me too. Uh, yeah, so this is just the, the next two buildings. Uh, right now, building eleven is pretty close to completion. They just submitted some paint samples that we're gonna take to the, to the business owner for the first building, um, and that we're gonna look at to make sure they match what was previously approved. Um, and then, uh, so this will actually authorize him to start the construction for buildings ten and nine, which is the next two buildings, the video store and, uh... What's the other one? Is, is senior beef, yeah.
It's the, it's the pink, the pink one?
Yeah.
Yeah, the pink one. There you go. Yeah, it's not senior beef yet. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, so those two are next on the list to get, start construction on those.
And we already have the ordinance for that? I know that we were, you were kinda questioning that about having the ordinance as far as maintain, maintenance and what's required for them to make sure that they don't paint it a different color, and has that been done?
So, um, so our past city manager was, had a contract that she had... I believe, Neil, that you worked on the contract with the downtown business owners? Or was it just Sonia?
Just the contract.
The contract, okay. So, uh, before we start construction, we'll, we'll have them sign the same contract that the previous business owner...
It's already in writing?
It's already in writing, yeah. Something Neil and the city manager was working on.
'Cause, um, I just have a question, because I know that there's already, um... There's already a sign, I don't know if you saw that, that's already like...
Yeah.
I guess they clipped it onto the, and it's not even painted yet, so... It's not completed, but it's already, they have their, and I get it, they're trying to get the people to know where their business is at, but, um, maybe they could put it on the window for, for now? Because they already put it on the, on the trim of the, of the top part of the building.
Yeah, I think that they said those are temporary before they get some real signs. Um, I think it'd be nice to issue some sort of guidance for them to, to make it look like a western type style sign.
And also maybe have a, like a requirement, you mean?
Yeah, like a...
Yeah, I, I agree.
Submit for review.
'Cause they're just like... No, it's just like a board. You know?
Yeah.
And I think that, that's something that they would have to, you know, we made the bigger expense, they can make that expense on their sign.
Yeah.
So, um, that way, it looks nice and it's all uniformed throughout the downtown.
Yeah, I think we talked about with Jeff about creating some sort of sign ordinance for downtown. So, I think we can probably, that shouldn't be that hard, bring it to council and have that adopted, so they can put their signs back up when we're done.
Yeah, and a requirement, right?
Yeah, to require them to, to have a certain, like, process, like, submitted in its style, western style, um, submitted for review, no larger than this size.
Right.
That type, that type of ordinance, so.
Okay.
We, I can work with Jeff to get that together.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
I had a question, Javier. I, I was asked about the signs, and, um... Um, it was one of the business owners right there in, in, in front, uh, Main Street. So, the signs, um, they, she wanted to know more or less if we knew how much those signs were gonna cost them, and and you're saying they, they have to buy their own signs, so that's one question she did have. And is there any way we can find out more or less how or how these businesses in, um... On their signs, like, how much it'll cost them? Create for them, and then, and then you'll let them have them, right?
Cost.
Yeah, the cost, no, the cost.
I can, I can reach out. It, it's gonna depend on the designs.
And, and how big they get?
Yeah, but I can reach out to the sign company, get some preliminary cost. Um, I, I'm sure it's gonna be a few thousand dollars for sure. Those sign companies aren't cheap.
And like I said earlier, we spend thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars for that facade. If that's all it's gonna take is just for them to put a sign, that's, they didn't, they didn't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars, they spending only a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars. So, i- it shouldn't be the city that's gonna take that cost too.
Yeah, I think they would be willing to, I haven't had any, um, pushback on, on the signs, I think they're pretty excited actually to, to, to have that opportunity. So I, from what I hear from the business owners, that they would be willing to do that, but I know that, I think our grant writers are looking for some grants, right, for, for signs?
I don't think there's any grants for signs, because that's property, that's private property again, and usually grants are for something for a nonprofit, something that's gonna be on roads, or a, something that's gonna be community, but if it's a business, either it's a business loan, that's the only thing I have not, as of yet, seen. And I get a lot of notifications for the grants that are coming in, and I have not seen not one about signs, so um, I don't want them to think that there is and just wait on that. I, I'd rather us be honest and upfront and say, hey, we don't have the money for that, we already spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on this, it will be, this is a requirement for, you know, for what they're getting. And if they're only gonna spend a thousand or two thousand dollars, it's, it's a big investment for them, and it brings a lot of value to their property. So, it's a plus for them.
The one that, the, I'm sorry, if I can clarify a little bit of that one, Javier, is, it is a grant that we are working with, uh... Councilor Solorio's helping me with the ED, EDC, which is, um, our, our business that I brought, EDC, I'm sorry. Uh, that I brought from, um, my, the five city council meeting that I went to, board meeting that I went to, so she is helping us with that. She did look for that grant, we do have a grant that she found that would help the business, and, and it's the signs, and what we're looking at is like the sign that we have out here in front, cause when we had our meetings, the businesses would want to be able to promote, so we wanna know how can we help them thrive, how can we promote them. So they're looking at like the sign that's in, and we go into Ridley? Where all the businesses are showing their businesses, so, um, Pac Auto, Bob Peralis, has, has offered a part of his property where if we, if, and when we get the grant, they can put the sign there for all the businesses.
Well, that's...
So they could do it, but that's, that's the one you're talking about, I just wanted to clarify that one.
Yeah, cause what I was understanding, it was a sign on their property.
Yeah, this would be on their storefront.
Yes.
Yeah.
The one we were talking first, it's, it's, that's right, and then this one that you're talking about, the grant, that is for
I see.
The sign to put out on Manning, where it would promote all the businesses that we're working with, the small businesses right now.
Cause we're talking on this item, it's not the sign, it has to do... Okay, cause we're on this item and it has to do with downtown. Okay.
Um, Javier, you brought up the fact that the business owner gets to choose the paint on their... Is that something that's, that's the way we presented it to them?
Um, yeah, so, yeah, the, we presented to them the initial design, um, and then, um, at the time, the council directed us to, to look at western type colors, so we gave them kind of like a template of, that they could choose from, not any color, so...
The concept is like, you know how when you're buying your house, and they give you, uh, some, like, samples for you to choose from? Is, is it kind of the same thing? So, is there any other questions? Any from the public? Hearing none, so do we have a motion to approve?
I had a business in Dinuba, and the city of Dinuba, what they told me was, there was a grant up to half of your sign. It was six thousand dollars, my sign, and they paid three thousand dollars with the grant. Um, it had to be a certain size, it had to be, uh, approved by them, and not just put together by whatever they wanted, so that's kind of how the city of Dinuba does it, but that grant did help me a lot, cause my sign cost me five thousand nine hundred dollars, and it was amazing by A plus one signs.
May I ask, when was that? How many years ago was that?
Um, maybe like, ten years ago, but I'm just saying, it is, it is out there, so, um, but, but you guys should have the last say on what goes up there.
Yeah, but I think we already have somebody that's, a contractor that's actually does look for our grants, so if there is something, then that's when they come back to council.
The city, like, they, they had to prove even my sign, they were like, unless it goes by our specifications, you can't put it up there, because...
Actually, that's the way most cities do it.
Yeah, exactly.
Even, even in, in Salma, is, it's like that, you can't, you can't paint, put whatever color you want on downtown. It has to go through council.
Especially a lot of money to put that up there, it gots to relate to the building and not just be whatever it needs to be.
Cause and then if you put us, all this, all this money towards beautifying downtown, and then you put something that's gonna make it look...
If, if Kingsburg, uh, doesn't allow In-N-Out Burger, they have that, they, you know, Swedish, they go by the Swedish.
Yeah.
You know, and there was a, something that happened in, in that story, but everything has to have the Swedish design to it, or it, you know, you don't really ha- have an option of being in their town, so we kind of gotta stick to what if it's a downtown, western town, let's stick to that.
Yeah, I agree. So, maybe if, if in the future, maybe they can, if, kind of follow up and see if there's anything like that that can help the businesses, but I want us to be truthful with them, that we're gonna look for them, not just wait and see if, you know, we're gonna pay for it too, because I, I think that we've already done a lot for downtown. Um, I know it's expensive and a lot of them do struggle, but, um, if we can't do it, we can't do that too, you know, it's just, just the reality of it. But we're trying to at least beautify our downtown. Is there any other, I think you had, you had, were you gonna have a question? No? Hearing none, then any other questions from the public? Yeah, well, they weren't, but, but we already asked, so we're past that. I, it started already though, I'm sorry, I don't go back. I, I, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry, but we already went and I asked you, and you didn't... I, I, I get that, but, you know... I, I get it, but I, it's already, it was, I get it, we can move, alright, so do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty-two-four-zero-six? Motion by Diego. Diego, but, uh, and who was the second?
Me.
Sabrina? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, five yes. Five zero. Okay, so now we have our last item, which is presentations, cause we're just waiting for Stephanie to, um, arrive, where's she at? Go ahead.
Can you hear me better? Alright. Um, so on, um, this grant, um, it's, uh, the purpose of it is to, um, help reduce violence, um, in communities that are at higher risk of being victimized by a violent crime. Um, it ran from October of twenty-twenty through June of twenty-twenty-three for the main program, and then after that point, we have six months to evaluate and audit, and so our final reporting is gonna be due at the end of this month. Um, so we are given six hundred thousand dollars of, of an award with a hundred percent match, and with that, we get to, for the city, three hundred thousand, and then for the, um, non-governmental agencies, the community-based nonprofits, they get fifty percent of it, so they get three hundred thousand as well. And, so currently where we're at with the reporting, um, and this is, you know, as of the end of June thirtieth, um, is for, I'm gonna start with the city part first. So that one, we are given the three hundred thousand dollar, um, budget. In the first category, salaries and benefits, um, we were allotted two hundred twenty thousand eight hundred. And that's to cover one violence prevention officer, full-time, for that three-year period, and then, um, also for the contribution from other officers towards violent crimes. Um, and then, and that's for the match side of it. And then the next one is, and we, oh, sorry, we fully utilized, um, the grant funds on that. The match, we are a little short, so with it being a hundred percent match, um, we're a little short on that at a hundred ninety-five thousand five hundred six. The next one is our service and supplies, um, our budget, grant funds, eight hundred, and our match, fifteen thousand two hundred. Um, on that one, um, we have used grant funds of one hundred seventy-two and ten thousand in our match, so I, on that one, we're a little short as well.
I have a question on the match. So, if you don't meet the required match, what happens?
Any state funds that we receive that we don't, um, have the required match, we will be required to pay back.
So, that means you would have to pay how much back?
So, far from the city side, um, we would have to pay back fifteen thousand four hundred three dollars, where we're at right now.
And that's from one match, or is that the other, cause you said there was one that was ninety-five?
That's all together, on the entire, um, three hundred thousand dollar budget.
It's only a thousand five hundred?
It's, um, we would have to return fifteen thousand four hundred three dollars.
Okay.
Because, yeah, the next one, the professional services, that's our grant administration, we were budgeted sixty thousand, um, we've only spent two thousand six hundred twenty-five. And then, um, for our project evaluation, that one, we actually, that, we spent that thirty-five hundred dollars, it's in the wrong category right now, so we can request to have it moved over and corrected. We haven't charged anything towards our financial audit, that's just our, um, an allocation of our regular annual audit that goes towards the grant, so we just haven't reported it. And then, um, the last one is our travel and training. So, grant funds we received is two hundred twenty-seven thousand ninety-seven, and our match is at two hundred eleven, six hundred ninety-four. So from the city, as it is, we would need to return, like you asked, the fifteen thousand four hundred three. From our non-governmental agencies, we've actually received grant funds for two hundred eight thousand four hundred sixty-three. However, we've only matched, or from their side, they were only able to match a hundred thirty thousand seven hundred eighty-nine. So in that one, as it is now, um, we will need to return seven hun, or seventy-seven thousand six hundred seventy-four, and that one's done. There's, that's for sure, we're gonna need to return that.
Cause there is no way to resolve that situation, because it's already passed, and that, is that because it expired, the one that expired in December, thirty-first of December?
Right, the expenses for, um, that area, they, we could only report activity up through June of twenty-twenty-three.
So it was June, as of that, then it was already done, you couldn't report anything else?
Correct, unless we found activities that
Were done prior.
Were really done, but
Were not reported?
Yeah.
Okay.
We've gone through it, and that's, that's it on that.
Stephanie, I, I have a question. So, why weren't these reported, or why weren't, why are we missing so much? How, when you're, these are certifications, right, that we're not, that we had to, the, that the finance department had to send to the state, correct?
That's correct.
So a match, I think, I think, I, I get what she's saying, is how come it's not being reported, but isn't a match? Yeah, the match is like services that we're providing that are, um, what's the word? In-kind, thank you. In-kind work, right?
Correct.
So we didn't do our in-kind part, like the portion?
Because this grant started in twenty-twenty, right? It just finished early in December.
Correct.
So, but you're saying since June of last year, they should have reported all that before? Because now we can't even report it, because it already passed.
We can report...
Why was all this document not being reported, or, or was it lost?
Was that too?
For the...
In-kind, that was not reported.
For the in-kind, everything from them has been reported. It's done.
No, but who did not do their in-kind?
Oh, the match?
Yes. Who did not do it, because that's what is missing, that is why it's missing, because it was not ever done, correct?
Okay.
Yeah, but I, I want her to say who. Yes, I wanna know exactly who.
What year did it start?
Twenty-twenty.
It started, um, October of twenty-twenty.
So what departments were involved in that?
So, we have four, um, Current Church, they, um, only started the program with us, so they didn't receive any grant funding, but they did volunteer the in-kind time of fourteen thousand dollars fifty-three, they weren't short at all. Um, the next one, the ROCC, they received, uh, forty-one thousand seven hundred twenty-two, and the match...
What's that, ROCC? Is that a church too? I just, I just want, cause I, I don't know who they are, staff is the one that is responsible to making sure all of this gets done, so I'd just like to know it, when you mention, you know, by acronyms, can you please just kind of let me know who they are?
Talked about the Current Church before too, I remember that being discussed.
Yeah, that, that was a faith, uh, faith-based organization and, uh, church-based, and that was Pastor, Pastor Ricardo?
Oh, okay.
Took over that. He took it over from, uh...
Okay, I already know what happened with that one.
When he took it over, that's, yeah, that was his organization.
Uh, the next one, uh, Breaking the Chains, received eighty-three thousand nine hundred eight, and the match was fifty-nine thousand eight hundred forty-five. And the last one, Angels of Grace, received eight, eighty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-five, and the match was fifty-two thousand eight hundred.
So Breaking the Chains didn't do their part?
It's not a hundred percent match.
No, but... Angels of Grace was not... Angels of Grace was not, okay, Angels of Grace was not the actual facilitator that was going to do the services. They were the, the, the people that were going to pass through to Susan's, uh, services with the school, correct? Do you recall that?
But Susan was at our civic center, right?
But that's, that's how she was getting paid through Angels...
That's how I understand it, is that, uh, uh, Susan's Com- Comprehensive Behavioral Health Services, they were going through Angels of Grace because they had a tax ID number.
Right.
So the funds were being funneled through, through Angels of Grace, to get to pay them, and that was, um, yeah, that, that, that explains. CBS, yes.
And, and I believe the reason why that happened was because when they did the guidelines for, they didn't put, they didn't put Angels of Grace as far as being the one to just be the administrator, to administer the, the funds to CBS, cause CBS was not a nonprofit. Is that right?
Yeah, they didn't have the, the five oh one C three tax, tax ID to, to facilitate that grant, and they had the, the qualifications to provide the service, they, they just didn't have the tax.
So they were just under the umbrella of Breaking the Chain?
Through, uh...
Breaking the, I mean, Angels of Grace, sorry. And what happened with, um, Breaking the Chains, cause I thought I've seen them at most of the events that you guys held.
So during that period, we had, I had multiple, multiple, uh, neighborhood block parties, we had Stop the Violence, Cease the Fire, uh, events, and, and we had numerous of them, so on, on all of those events, these are all our partners. So we had Breaking the Chains out there, we had CBS, uh, we, we had, uh, United Health, so we had a, a lot of partners, and it was a very robust program, so we had a lot of services that were out there. The fact that they, uh, they fell short on their ends, as far as their objectives and, uh, benchmarks that they wanted to meet, and, and some of it they explained was, uh, part of it was staffing, and they went through some staffing changes as well, so they weren't able to participate in the fashion that they wanted to do to meet those, those benchmarks, and that's why we see that they fell short on, on some of these in-kind matches, so the funds that we got to finance, uh, their services, will have to be reimbursed, because... Because uh
Returned.
Yeah.
Okay.
What's the, and if you could tell me again, what's the, the match thing from Angels of Grace? What was the difference on that one?
The difference on that one is thirty thousand thirty-five. That's the amount that's short from the hundred percent match.
And it's just because of paperwork that we didn't submit or what?
Um it's because of the documentation that we received, um it, that's all that we've received as far as verification of the in-kind.
I can, I can clarify. So generally, you're contracted to provide eighty thousand dollars worth of services? So you provide those services to the community. However, because of staffing and what have you, you were unable to fulfill that obligation and you were only to, able to provide fifty thousand dollars worth of services. So uh in, in essence, you should have had more events and more services to provide to the community to consume that eighty thousand dollars, but because of
Shortfall from because of
Yeah, so like if we schedule, I schedule a dozen uh community events throughout the year. And because of staffing, sometimes I have to cancel those events. Like, oh, you know what, I gotta cancel. And so some of those situations uh arose and, and they made us, they made us aware of that. All, however, we did uh everything we could to meet that uh from our end. Uh the other, our partners, our CBOs. Um they were actively a part of all of those, uh those outreach and community outreach uh events that I had and, and they're random throughout the city. But uh, like I said, that's, that may not, may not entirely be uh the whole reason behind it, but I know there was uh some legitimate uh excuse about why they couldn't meet their, their benchmarks. So and, and they were, that's, that's how they fell short.
Thank you for explaining that because I know we've had that question many times. And now that you're there, you're actually being
Not a matter of uh reports not being submitted, it's just that they only provided fifty thousand dollars worth of services. So they're not gonna bill us, there's no more reports to, no more bills.
So they didn't meet the threshold as far as if it was supposed to be an eighty uh thousand
Dollar program.
Program, they were only able to meet fifty thousand of that program. So they, cause they weren't able to provide the other, so it wasn't, okay, I, cause I think the misunderstanding is that we paid them. At, reports missing and that we paid them for something that they didn't do. So they, they got paid for what the services that they did provide. They just didn't get to ex, you know.
Yeah, they were, they were entitled to eighty thousand dollars uh in reef, in reimbursement for all their s- services. If they could meet that, you know, that threshold, so and, and they tried, but I, I guess they couldn't.
Well, then that's more clearer. I think that it, it's, it's, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, I, I think that's what we needed.
All this time, huh?
Yeah, all this time. And my question is, my question is, what we have to pay back, do we have that? Or was that used already, you know, used somewhere else?
It would have to come out of the general fund.
So it, it's not that, it's not that, it's not that we have to, okay, so in other words, if you, and this is uh correct me if I'm wrong, uh Chief, since you're more aware of what's going on. Um so if you have the eighty thousand, right? And that eighty thousand is what we're supposed to use, right? So if you didn't meet the eighty thousand and they got forty. So the forty we have to pay back? Okay, because we didn't meet that, that threshold.
They didn't meet their, their But my question is, is the money there to like?
Do we have it to pay it back?
Yeah, but and I, that's what scares me.
And my question is, I did
General fund. It's always under the general.
And, and my question to that is, because if you remember, you might remember that we questioned this a lot of times. A lot with the CalVIP grant and the Angels of Grace, and not only that one, the rest of them. That, and I, it wa- I did ask one, in one of our meetings that, why was, cause I was told Angels of Grace is gonna finish in August. And I said, why in August if the grant runs till December? Don't, the, when they do the grant, don't they give you enough money for a certain date? And they, I was told yes. And I said, why did the grant money finish for Angels of Grace? Um cause I was told it was August. It's one of, in one of our meetings, it was, we were discussing it. And the response I, I received, well, we all received was because they used their funds faster than they should have. So Yeah, I know, I see that face.
Doesn't it start? Go ahead.
Well, the fiscal year starts in
Yes, so that's why the August was brought up, but it was through June.
It was through June.
But again, I, I understand what you were talking about.
Our fiscal year starts July to June. People, when they think a year, they think December, January to December, but it's not like that.
To June.
Yeah.
But that, but that was my question because I was told at that time, no, they only have till August because of the funds. They, they use their funds, but Breaking the Chain and Centro La Familia was still continuing to give services to the, our community. Because the funds were all the way till December. So
Okay, to December of twenty twenty-three?
Exactly.
Um that was just um not a clear understanding of it. Because as far as the, anything between um July of twenty twenty-three and December that we can still um get costs back from would only be audit and the evaluation. That's it.
Because I think that, I think where the misconception was too is that the December twenty-three is when the actual grant expires.
Yeah.
That was it. Not that, you know, they had funds to use until then. It's that it expires. You have to submit all the backup for this grant.
Yeah.
By then, that was the deadline. As, that's what I, of December. That's what I was told from the department when I actually contacted the state to ask for clarification. And they said that they, the city had until December thirty-first of twenty-three to submit everything. And, and that was the deadline. Anything that would be submitted after that would not uh would, would not, I guess you couldn't submit anymore. Cause it had expired. That's what, how was, it was explained to me. Um, cause I did ask those questions, cause we were trying to get more clarification and, and obviously we're not getting that, all the facts. But this is why I also mentioned about the next grant that was in the process of being approved, which was what, five million? And I said, wait a minute, let's fix this one first before we jump into another grant and end up with the same situation or worse. So
Okay. We can still rep- report on it. Um so even, we can only include costs up through December. So we have until the end of this month to do reporting. So we have put in a bu- a budget modification we've been pre-approved for. And so what we're gonna do is move that thirty-five hundred over into product evaluation, our project evaluation. And then with our professional services, that was um budgeted for the grant administration. Since um the grant um company that we were going to use, um we hired the staff. A couple of the staff members here for the city within a month of the grant starting. So we are going to ask for fifty-seven thousand of um that grant money to be brought over to our salaries and benefits category. And then the match that's left over as well. So we're gonna be turning in um a final report by the end of this month and we're gonna max that out. It's no problem at all. We've
And you'll be bringing that back to us so it, you can, I guess.
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so once we do that, we've also not reported the full amount yet on um service and supplies. We've spent more than that, so we're gonna be able to max that out, no problem. And we also have not yet reported um the financial audit, so that's gonna max it out. With that, for our three hundred thousand budget, we'll leave seven thousand four hundred dollars, the way I see it right now, not used.
Okay.
Hey Stephanie, I have a question for you. I know that, I've asked this before, but I really need some clarification. What funds are they using to use the civic center right now? They still have the behavioral class.
It has to stay with the CalVIP.
Uh can I speak to Stephanie?
It's not on the agenda.
It's a question.
Exactly.
Is it from the Angel of Grace money too coming through?
It doesn't have to do with the CalVIP. It has to be agendized so you can have a discussion on that. We just had this conversation. So um if there's any other questions that are pertaining to the CalVIP? Hearing none? Any from the public? Okay.
So I, I just wanted to say one last thing. We're not, if with this, we won't have to return any of the unmatched funds from the city. We're pretty much maxing out our budget.
That's great.
And um we, we will only be left with returning seventy-seven thousand of the
And I know why that one was.
However, but since we're getting then the sixty-five thousand dollars, that hopefully will help counter that at least a little bit.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is it for CalVIP?
Good job, Stephanie, thank you.
It's gonna apply to everything.
No, CalVIP only?
It's gonna apply for everything.
Only, if not, I have a
Part of it, that's part of it. Uh in December, uh you guys told that, uh all the public that you're gonna request state audit. And I don't know what's happening, you know, so that's, that was my question only. Why we still going with all these problems that we finding?
You weren't here, uh Umberto, when that happened.
I'm, I'm sorry, but what I'm saying is, what is the status of the state audit? I mean, did we ever request a state audit?
I, I don't know what you're talking about. I, I
You say that you were
I thought you were talking about our audit. We did our, our audit. Did we already complete that? Yeah, okay. So I have to move on. I have another presentat- I have another presentation that is ready to present.
Let me finish. You guys, especially you, Mayor, you were the one that said that you were gonna request the state audit, you know, so, so I don't know. I was not here.
Yeah.
So I lost a lot of time.
Yeah, thank you. Go ahead. Um I think we have the roundup that wants to do a presentation. I, were you told five minutes?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Good evening. Um, good evening, City Council, Chief, City Managers, Residents of Parleyer. My name is Patrick Molina and this is Alfred Gonzalez and Margaret Gonzalez, and we are part of the Parleyer Roundup Committee. The Parleyer Roundup Committee is currently planning our twenty twenty-four Parleyer Roundup Festival to be held at the Earl Ruth Park in Parleyer. On April twenty-fifth to the twenty-eighth, this event is a great way to bring our local community closer together to raise funds and awareness for worthy causes, bring about positive change in our area, celebrate something special and simply to get to know your neighbors. This year's theme is gonna be All-American Family Reunion. Family reunions are very important. A parade will kick off at the main, uh main event Saturday morning at eleven o'clock. Followed with live bands providing music for dancing. Uh for any of the, of the music lineup, please visit our website at parleyerroundup.com. Also, don't forget to sign up for the parade on the website. There's a QR code provided for you to fill out digitally. Um for, for anybody who wants to participate, and we encourage families to participate and bring out your floats. Um the California Carnival will be open Thursday through Sunday for the, for the pleasure of the children. And we'll have them at our local um, local stores to be provi- we'll provide the information here uh shortly. And then um also don't forget, come out on Friday night, celebrate our second annual Parleyer Panther Alumni Friday kickoff. And we like to encourage all our former classmates to come out on Friday and kickoff uh a great weekend. You know, they always say it's five o'clock somewhere, well, that five o'clock is at the Earl Ruth Park with the Parleyer Panthers alumni. The Parleyer Roundup Committee can only achieve these goals with the assistance of generous donations and members of our community. Without these donations serving those in our area, would, it would not be possible. And we like to give a big thanks to the City of Parleyer, to the City Council, Police Department. Um the Public Works, cops building bridges, city employees and everyone in the city who supports us. Parley Unified School District is always there for us and we appreciate them. And thank you for our, some of our sponsors from AMM Engineering and Fowler Packing, Mid Valley Disposal. Um they uh Custom Produce and Coquillas, AKA Corral, uh we appreciate them helping us out and, and taking their time to make this a great event for seventy years, seventy-five years and going, seventy, I think we're seventy-eight now, years and going. So it's very important to have this kind of event, to bring together everybody that might live next to somebody for thirty years and probably never even talked to them, but shared a good talk at the park and enjoyed a soda, a, a, a dog be- beverage or anything that, that comes together. You'll be amazed that, uh I lived, uh these people that lived together next to each other for sixty years. And until I moved in that house, not even eight months later, I met both of them and I told them, well, what were you guys waiting for? For me to move in to introduce you? So it's very important we do this and together with you guys, and we thank you very much. And it's always a safe environment due to our PD and uh the other police department's chief that you bring out. And hopefully we could work together with that again, like always, and make it a, a, a great event. And we brought a little video for you guys to see of our past event um and
Before you start the video, uh I just have a, an ask from you guys. I did get an email from um some students. I guess they're going to the um Disneyland band is going out there from this Parleyer Unified School District. And they're gonna perform out there, so they're actually, I guess, have to pay three hundred dollars or so. I'm actually giving them a donation, but I know that there's other students that probably have the same situation as the ones that did reach out to me. So I was wondering if you guys are still doing the scholarships where you give out to them, maybe you can reach out to the band and see who else needs help? So that you guys can support that. I mean, I would appreciate if you guys would, you know, donate to
You know, we do our scholarships every year. We do our, uh, we participated in helping out with any, anybody that asks for that help. That's what it's for. I mean, it'd be great, you know, like we're a five oh one C and we don't get any grant money to help us out. But knowing and hearing that you guys are, you know, helped out with some other organizations, we're a homegrown one.
Yeah.
You know, we're the ones to be on that list that maybe get that kinda help.
You can actually apply for grants if you have a grant writer and they would actually apply for those things.
But yeah, I, I, I didn't think about that till we just heard this stuff.
Because the five oh one C three can actually do that.
Yeah.
And um but the other, the reason why I was asking, because I'm, I'm positive that there's more kids that need help. And, and I'm doing it, I'm not no nonprofit and I'm doing it out of my own pocket. But I was, I was just wondering if maybe you guys can
Almost de- most definitely.
And find out what students there need the help so that they, you can help make it a reality for them to be able to go. Cause some of them probably won't be able to go if they don't have that three hundred dollars.
Yeah, some years ago, there was, uh, when we first started the roundup, there was an individual, uh, uh, that she had got accepted to a college back east and she didn't have an airplane ticket to go. So the roundup stepped up and we paid for that airplane ticket. We donated the money. Said she's gonna make it. Cause we're gonna do our part. That's what we do. We do this event to make it a event that gives out throughout the year in any way possible for anyone. And most importantly, our businesses, they thrive in that whole week and they make a lot of money. And that's a great thing for us because maybe they'd be able to afford those nice signs and they'd be able to uh, uh, um, get their, their advertising out there. Cause we, we really brag about our town a lot. So, but yeah, uh we will, we will reach out to them. We talked to Mr. uh Inigas Superintendent, just, uh, we're gonna talk to him, I believe, next week or the week after.
Maybe?
No, we talked to him too. Yeah.
Please speak into the mic.
We, we actually have board members and committee members that do work at the school, so like Alfred, we have Noonie and Irma. And they have a close relationship with all of the students. And um they know more or less which are the students that are doing really good, but maybe can't afford it. And we, they do let us know, like, you know, they'll say, hey, maybe we can help so-and-so, you know, he's not gonna be able to go or she's not gonna be able to go. So that, the only thing is that we do, what we do is we keep it discreet because we don't want those students to feel embarrassed or anything.
Times it's also because they don't have, it's, it's not easy to ask somebody.
Yes.
Hey, can you help me? You know, it, it takes a lot of courage. So this one young lady that reached out to me, it, that took a lot of courage for her to email me and request some help. And I, that's when I thought, you know what, there's so many others, I'm, uh, other children that I'm sure would wanna go, but don't know how to ask.
Yeah, and you'd be surprised, I mean, the close relationship that we do have with the students because they've been with us, you know, since they were four through T, uh Cal Ripken and football and now Roundup. And um I, I know they feel comfortable coming to us and we are.
With the band, uh, I think they were all asked, hey, you need to send out emails. I got emails and letters. And um I think it's that, that's um his push to, hey, you guys need to go out there and find sponsors. Um and then when it gets down to the nitty-gritty, then he starts reaching out to some of our organizations.
One-on-one.
Cause I, yeah, one-on-one, like, hey, I had some
By the end of either next month or
I think it's end of March.
Yeah, and I think they did start a little late, so
Yeah.
I mean, the school did let us know, like, we do have contacts that let us know, like, they did start late. If they're gonna be making payments, but if there's anything that they can't do, then yes, at that point, we would step up to help them.
Yeah. But anybody out there willing to help them out, contact Mr. Tenelian?
Yeah, and, and we also did uh talk to them.
Wondering, because I know that you guys did do the scholarships and I was just wondering if you could do that now with them. Because I, I, I do see that there's Because I, I do see that there's a lot of need, especially right now, that there's a lot of struggles.
Yeah, yeah, we, yeah, definitely, we will. And they did, they're gonna make it to Disneyland that day, but they're gonna leave some of their band members that are gonna stay here to help us bring our band to play for us, because we still haven't officially had our whole band kickoff our parade. But we will have some of them participate this year. So, that'd be really great, because we wanna go with the All-American Family Reunion to kickoff, because in two years, a lot of people don't realize, but it's gonna be the 250th birthday party of the United States of America, our country celebrating their anniversary of 250 years, and it doesn't come every day. So we're leading up to, building up to that day, and it's very important to recognize that, so. And hopefully we'll have the downtown ready to go.
Now I know, that'd be nice.
Okay, can you start the video?
That was five, five years of hard work with your guys' help, and thank you guys. From all of us, we appreciate everything you guys do to support us. And thanks to the Parlier Unified School District and the Council of Marketers for making that video. So those will be memories that we'll be able to have for a long time. Thank you guys.
So now we can move on. Thank you very much for the presentation. We can go ahead, move, just a second. We can go ahead and move on to the closed session. I think we have a closed session.
We have public employee employment, or special council, public employment related to all administrative.
Okay, I know that we didn't do the council comments, so we can go ahead and do that, and then we can just move on to closed session. Because we're actually... I think we need to move on, because, so we can start with...
10 seconds, somebody. I was gonna make this a rest, let me try to check for $100.
I think you could probably get ahold of the school and, and find out what kids, because that, that way you can give it to the school, actually directly to the band teacher. That would probably be best. Or maybe they can communicate with, with them. Thank you. All right, yeah. Yeah, well, now we both, him and I donated, so. If there's any others that wanna donate from up here, would be great. Chief, let's start with you.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank our finance staff, Stephanie, for doing a great job in, in closing out that grant. I know she put a lot of work into that, so, her and, and Sandra, so yeah. And, yeah, Parlier Roundup, you guys are doing a fantastic job every year. We're, we're proud of you and glad to work with you guys, so keep, keep, keep it up. You bet.
Also wanna thank you guys, the Parlier Roundup. I know how hard it is and how much work you guys, it takes you guys to, to do the roundup, and the community, and everybody that helps, and everybody that comes out to the parade and just enjoy themselves. It's really nice. Last year, I heard a lot of people like, oh, I haven't seen you, god, my gosh, look, you look different when we were in high school. Yeah, it's a lot of years, right? But yeah, you guys are doing a great job, I'm really, really happy about that. Javier, good job. Hopefully we get all those filters put in and stuff, get that finished up. I know it's been a lot of work, but hopefully we can get that done. Thank you so much for that. Chief, thank you. I think Chief has been doing an awesome job, you and Bertha, and just keeping our city going with two hats that you have to wear. But, I wanna also thank Marcia from the EDC program in helping us with our businesses, and getting their signs, trying to get that sign up. I think, you know, we cannot forget our businesses, especially because a lot of our businesses are in town, and everybody drives through Manning, so it's something that's in the works, and hopefully that we can finish it, and we can help them out. So, thank you, everybody.
I just wanna thank Chief and Bertha for the day-to-day city business flow, and keeping it going. Again, thank you, Roundup Committee, that was a really nice video. I look forward to the events each year. We know it's a family tradition of ours. I just like to see everybody, more people get involved, participate in the parade, more families. I know our family did, you know, the float the first year, you know, in some of the parades, and even our, our Roundup Parade. But, you know, we, we start getting involved with our, with events. There's an alarm going off. Um, is it? Oh, yeah. But again, thank you. Looking forward to the Easter event coming up on the 23rd, I believe. So, just getting the kids out there and enjoy themselves. And thank you, the Finance Department, Javier and Jeff, for doing all you do, Police Department, City Staff. Thank you for all you do, and I know it's tough, it's tough at my agency job work, but you know what, we just have to push through it, and it's just to get us moving forward in the right direction. And again, thank you, Stephanie and, and Sandra, who did a good job with that CalVip and getting us answers, clarifying, clarifying what, what's been going on with that grant, but thank you.
Just to piggyback off of everyone else, just thanking everyone, the Roundup, obviously our engineers and Jeff, and our city clerk and treasurer, we thank you guys for everything I do, Neil, City Staff especially. Like Sabrina said, I know it's tough times, but we just appreciate all of you guys, and if you guys could just keep moving forward and coming to work with a positive attitude, we will get to where we wanna be. Just again, thank you guys, especially Chief and Bertha, you know, holding up the, the, the house right here. So, I really do appreciate all of you.
I also wanna thank everybody in general that's involved, the Parlier Roundup, everybody that's involved, and things are going smooth and going forward, which is great. We need this. Keep up the good work, everybody.
I'd like to thank the Roundup, that was a great video you guys did, and that's why we need the younger generation, because, you know, everything moves forward, and there's new things to discover and do things, and so that's why we need the younger generation, and you guys are doing a great job. The only thing is that when you guys gave out the, the 100-year plaques, our family didn't get one, and we've been here 100 years. So that's all I want, is so we can hand that down to, to generation, to generation, because we've been here six generations already, and so that's, that's all. And just to thank the council and the staff, and Neil, and engineer, and planner, Michelle, everyone to keep the city going. I think everyone's doing a great job.
The video was really, really good. Really impressed. I'm looking forward to having a booth here, this year out there. So, so I wanted to also say... So let's start off with this. Parlier is not immune to the homeless crisis. Two years ago, I said I was gonna start a nonprofit homeless rescue. My 501(c)(3) has been electronically filed, and I'm waiting for approval from the IRS, but in the meantime, I'm on it. I had a wonderful meeting with the Chief Operations and Chief Program Officers from the Pavarello House to help find ways to help the Parlier houseless. Without the necessary funding, Parlier absolutely cannot adequately support our houseless population. I'm using my philanthropy, I can't say the word, philanthropy? Philanthropy abilities to effectively and humanely address the homelessness by connecting individuals to housing, healthcare, and supportive services, and quality hot restaurant meals. Right now, we're speaking about having large catering trays delivered to our houseless here in Parlier. The Chief Operating Officers are gonna be making a trip in the near future to Parlier to help me guide with my nonprofit rescue called Noah. Any questions?
Thank you.
Okay.
I have questions, but, oh, wait till the end.
Okay, so here's another one. So, Parlier, this is not just a third world problem, it exists, exists here in our own community. In less than two weeks, we added three large breed puppies in our town. The mama dogs actually have owners, but the owners don't get them fixed, they don't spay them. The problem has escalated to the point where it would take probably decades of a concentrated spay and noodle programs to begin to reduce the numbers here in Parlier. The animal rescues are not high priorities for the governments either, when we are competing demands from the schools, the Police Department, the Fire Departments. Also, four dogs left to organ this week, including JoJo, a large breed German Shepherd from the Parlier pound. But again, we are struggling, because every dog that leaves, there's lots more to take its place at its pound. We had a homeless person here in Parlier that had a pregnant pit bull. Someone donated money to terminate that dog's pregnancy. She refused to terminate the dog's pregnancy, so we just added more puppies here.
Yeah, it's a huge problem, I know.
So.
Hopefully we can get, find some kind of solution eventually. Javier? You have papers, okay. Yes, it's a, it's a presentation. He's like, I'm ready. He's like, I'm ready. Good thing it's only seven and, what, seven, three?
So we're, we're working on 23 projects in Parlier right now. I'm not gonna go over all of them, but I just wanna give you a quick update on TCP, because it's really important.
Umberto, may I just do this? Because, since Umberto's always the one questioning and saying that nothing's happening, that, that nothing's happening with our TCP project, so here it is, the proof is in the sand. I just wanted to, I wanted to share that with you, that way you can see it for your own cell.
I already know.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, a lot is happening.
Yeah.
A lot, millions of dollars worth of, of construction is happening. We built two tanks and, and two different site locations. We, we've built out all the concrete paths. Here, what you'll see is, is the three-week schedule look-ahead, what it looks like, how they're hopping from well to well to well. If you keep turning, you'll see the resident engineers reports. So we have staff that shows up to the job site every day, takes a picture, records what's happening on the job site. So that's what you're seeing there of every day for the past, I think I only included the past month, because the packet would've just been too big. But, I mean, here you'll see pictures as they progress, there's tanks being constructed, foundations, and electrical being installed. I mean, it's, it's an endless amount of work. Two giant steel-bolted tanks have been built. I would love to give you guys another tour one day or something, but just, I figured take this home with you, and you could kinda, if you have questions later, you can always, you can always call me, or we can figure something out.
Okay, now do we have Jeff?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Wanted to just point out that I'm starting to work with the Code Enforcement Officer to look at a number of properties around the city. Do wanna clarify an issue on a particular house that we've been working on for quite some time now on Parlier Court. There are a couple of structures, temporary structures, that were constructed in the front yard. And those are both being sold. The property owners are working with the city to properly address the situation that they were trying to, to go about in the beginning, when they were given incorrect information about what was allowed and what wasn't. So, I am, I met with the owner, spoke to her last week, met with her on Friday, and like I said, we're working with them to resolve that situation. So, hopefully we don't have any more code enforcement calls or fire department calls.
I think communication is key.
Correct. So I just wanted to bring that to council's attention, as well as anybody else who might be interested. We are actively working with, with that property owner. And I think that's really all I've got specifics-wise. We'll be bringing some other site plans and maps to the City Council in the pretty near, within the next few months for consideration, some residential development proposals that are on the table, so, that's all I got.
Thank you, Jeff, thank you guys. So, thank you, Javier. I know you've been working tirelessly trying to get this done. It, it, sometimes people don't understand that it takes years to get these things going. It's not an overnight, or a year, or two years. It takes years, especially with government. So thank you for updating us. I really like that you're doing that. I wish that we could probably put this on our website, Bertha, so that people can review this, if they have any questions, so that they're not misled, that there is nothing being done, everything is, is going as it should, but it just, it's a, it's a... process that takes a lot of time, so you can't just do it on the fly. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, I I did get a, an email just a little while ago from uh, Senator Office, uh, Ana Caballero. I guess they're requesting for any grants that we're proposing to apply for. They can't do any uh, budget um, funding anymore cuz you know that right now that there's a crisis with our budget, you know, we're in a budget crisis for the whole entire state. And um, so if there's anything that you guys are needing funds for, I will forward that email to you, uh, Chief and to Javier, so that we can submit because it's it's due by the first of March. So you gotta whip it up right now. Uh, I know. It's it's, you know how it is. In government, you just get notified right last minute. The other thing that I was so uh, proud of what you did with uh, Fresno Council of Governments was um, we did pre- uh, I talked about this before, we're going to the One Voice. And I will be their moderator over there and speaking on behalf of the city of Parler and all the county of Fresno. But um, we are proposing a um, trail. I know there was gonna be a trail when Sonia had presented it first. It was going to be a trail somewhere around here locally.
Yeah, I think right here across street.
Okay, so um, being that there was a discussion, it was also an article in the paper pertaining to the priorities of what we're looking at and this priority was only for kind of Parler, so I asked Javier if he could think of something that would be more, you know, regional instead of just focusing on the city of Parler cuz they wanna see things that are are gonna connect to other cities. So Javier did a fantastic job. The co- uh, the COG, Robert is is uh, amazed with the work that you do. They're all happy. Uh, Reedley, the city of Reedley, Nicole, she's excited about it. She told me that, you know, she's excited that you're actually gonna work on, we're gonna propose a trail that can connect to Reedley for students that might want to walk over there, ride their bikes down that way and skateboard. There will be a pathway for them to go and not be in a dangerous road like, you know, Manning. And so uh, there will be that, at least a little barrier where they know that they're safe walking to school. And, you know, from and to, or just to go to Reedley, you know, cuz I do see a lot of people going on their bikes and it is very dangerous, you know, for them to be out there or walking. You know, um, so I'm so excited that you did that. I'm glad that you came up with that. Everybody was impressed and I can't wait till we go in March. We're um, scheduled to go March sixteenth through the twenty-second. I'll be back here in time for our meeting, so I'm gonna have no break in between. Um, but I just can't wait to present that because I think that is important as something that the city of Parler is thinking outside of the box and doing something that's proactive and and it's beneficial for everyone, not just for the city of Parler, but also for Reedley. And uh, some, one of the things that the uh, COG member said is hopefully other cities will do that and connect um, Kingsburg or Fowler or, you know, Sanger. So thank you for doing that. I was, I was really impressed with that. Um, the other thing, um, thank you guys for your presentation. I really en- enjoyed that you brought something that, for people to see what the roundup does and I was at a, at a, I was on a panel today and oddly, I was in a panel today talking about future leaders cuz I actually got that for the leaders of Fresno. And I was up there with uh, uh, Nathan Megsag from uh, the Board of Supervisors and then you had um, Anna Per- um, Anna, Anna Lisa Pareja and myself. And there had, they had these people that are looking into poss- possibly being leaders and, you know, or going to politics or running for office or whatever. There's one gentleman that waited for me to come back down and he asked me, he goes, hey, why do they call Parler Little Texas? I go, oh, because back in the day, you had a lot of the Hano's here that migrated from Texas to work here. We have a little camp that's even a camp from, you know, Texas that they would come over here, work and then go back. I go, I'm sure you've heard of the roundup. And he said, oh, yeah. He goes, well, that's part of it too. You know, they they um, come here, they bring a lot of the bands from, you know, Texas or just around here that are locals that bring that back, that bring that music, that environment, you know, of what people mostly grew up with. I I know that because my my mother-in-law was from McAllen, Texas, so and most people around here in this community, either from McAllen or somewhere in that, in the Vaya. They always call it the Vaya, right? I don't know, I've never been in Texas, but I always hear that. So you guys, you know, this, this, this town has always been known to be Little Texas. And that's why we wanna keep this, the, the well, the commu- like the downtown, the the theme, the facade and the the atmosphere of of being country, you know, back in our roots, you know, back when, you know, the thing, I Yolanda has a uh, shoe, a horseshoe that was from the, back from the nineteen forties or maybe early nineteen twenties, I'm sorry, nineteen twenties, when they had a stable out there in that property. So that's what stuff that I like to see is the history, not forget our history and our community because one thing I'll tell you that in this community, we've lost a lot of the history here. And we need to work on bringing that history back and not letting go of it because other cities, Reedley, Kingsburg, um, even Sanger has a lot of their history in either pictures, a museum or whatever. I love history. I love to see those things and that's one thing that's been lost here in Parler and we have to bring it back. And the only way that we're gonna do it is being together, having the kids, our youth, being involved because they're our future. And they're the ones that are gonna also continue that tradition. So thank you for 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 that and I liked the video. Um, thank you guys for the good work that you do. Thank you, uh, Michelle. Thank you for uh, stepping up and working on the uh, Pover- with the Poverello. Um, I think you mentioned that they're trying to work with, um, I guess they're gonna be calling you, Chief? Right?
Right, they're gonna be calling you.
Um, to set up a, a day that they could be there at the civic center because you know how um, now Susan is only there, I think, one day a week instead of every day? They wanna come here and just provide the services. So um, that way they can do the services that they used to do? I think you worked with them before, right? So I, she will be reaching out to, is that what she said?
Right.
Okay, so now I, I'm done and so we're gonna go into closed session and thank you for being here and it is only gonna be eight o'clock. I'm so glad. Hopefully, closed session doesn't carry over until ten. Thank guys. Bye.
We're leaving because we can't talk here.
No, no.
We need to correct everybody's agenda.
Go ahead. May everybody have a seat so we can adjourn the meeting at least? So is there anything to report, Neil? There is nothing to report, meeting adjourned. Thank you.